The council meeting for the month of February will begin with our pledge of allegiance. I asked Mayor Portem Foster if she would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Foster. We'll begin with our roll call. Looks like all council members are present and accounted for, for the record. And then we'll move right into our approval of the minutes. This is for the January 6th and January 11th regular meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve both sets of meeting. I'm sorry, councilman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You do the hard part, I'll do the easy part.
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Very good. And a second, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Vigliotti and the easy second from Councilman Hale. Any discussion, questions, or amendments? All right, if everyone is satisfied, all in favor of approval of the minutes of January 6th and January 11th regular meetings signify with your thumbs up. Anyone opposed? No, we are unanimous. Thank you all. I will now ask the council if there's anything on the agenda that presents a conflict of interest tonight.
No, sir.
All right, no one is conflicted. Glad to hear it. We'll move into up for introduction this evening. This is budget amendment number one, ordinance 012021. I will entertain a motion to introduce, please.
Motion to introduce.
And a second, please.
A second.
All right, very good. We have a motion from Councilman Haines, second from Councilmember Fuller. Are there any questions on the budget amendment as it's presented? All right, for clarification for those tuning in from the comfort of their own homes, this is up for introduction this evening. And pursuant to code, it will be up for adoption next month. All in favor of introducing ordinance 012021 budget amendment number one? Signify with your thumbs up. And anyone opposed? No, we are unanimous. All right, next, we have up for adoption this evening, resolution 2021 dash zero three, our monthly water allocation. This one is for February 2021. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
And that is to approve, correct, councilman?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, motion from Councilman Vigliotti, second from Mayor Portem Foster to approve water allocation. Are there any questions from the council? All right, if we are satisfied, all in favor of approving resolution 2021 dash zero three water allocation, signify with your thumbs up. All right, and opposed? Nobody. Next, up for adoption this evening, resolution 2021 dash zero four. This was presented to us Wednesday night, the employee manual amendment of extended emergency policy. This will be added to the employee handbook. I will entertain a motion, and please specify what your motion is.
Motion to approve.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Vigliotti, a second from Mayor Portem Foster. Any questions? Or do we have any updates on this from Mr. Weaver? Okay, Councilman Vigliotti?
Mr. Mayor, did we decide whether we would add a set of, a sentence or something in there that would refer us to the future amendment that we're going to make regarding the designation of states of emergency? Or are we going to pass it as is and then amend next month?
I believe the intention is to pass it as is, and we'll ensure that what we pass for code will match titles and such to this. Is that everyone's understanding from Wednesday evening?
Thank you very much.
Yep, I believe the guidance for Mr. Gullah was, was such that we simply make sure we match titles and things. Very good. Any other questions? All right, if everyone is satisfied, all in favor of approving resolution 2021 dash zero four, employee manual amendment, extended emergency policy, signify with your thumbs up. All right, and anyone opposed? No, we are, again, unanimous. I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Weaver. Do you have any updates for your city manager report, sir?
I do have one item. Back in January, I had suggested that our Parks and Rec Director look into Maryland Heritage Areas Authority for a, a multipurpose trail grant opportunity, which she did. And in delving into that a bit more, she advised me today that part of the application requires that we be willing to convey a historic preservation easement to Maryland Historic Trust in the event that they feel it necessary for the property subject to the grant. We just found out about it this afternoon, but the application is due March 1st, so we kind of hate to miss that opportunity. So what I'm seeking this evening would be consensus to move forward with the application pending the city attorney's review of and recommendation on the, the idea of having to provide a preservation easement.
So for clarification, this would be a preservation easement along, I guess it'll be Ballinger Park where we're putting the trail?
Correct. Yes. And there, there are some questions about it. We obviously need more detail. The link that was provided is very general, very generic. And while the, knowing the nature of the property and the project, it's not as though we are renovating a specific historic building or something, some kind of cultural resource like that. So our expectation is they will not want an easement on there, but we do have to provide a letter with the application that agrees that we will provide, provide an easement should MHT, Maryland Historic Trust, request one. So we want to have Jay take a look at that and give his recommendation on it before we move forward, but we also can't wait until the, the March meeting.
Okay, Councilman Vigliotti, you have a question, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I like the idea of the grant. I just, the only thing that, that, you know, Jim, as you were alluding to, that concerns me is that easement, because I, I mean, if we grant an easement, I mean, I guess we can always reject the grants in the end if we receive it and if it turns out to be something not to our liking. If we grant them a historic easement to the preservation trust, what does that entail for us with the property that we give to them as that easement? I mean, do we lose control over it effectively? Or is it just something that they can say, this land is part of the land that we've given the grant to, and therefore we require more funding from the state in order to provide funding for these historic easements?
Right. And we would not, we don't know the specifics of it at this point. In the, the, the template that they provided for the letter, it indicates that it, it could be a, well, it's a preservation easement or easement modification on the property if required by MHT. A preservation easement or preservation slash maintenance agreement, if required, imposes a financial obligation upon the property owners and a legal encumbrance, as any easement would, upon the easement property. So it, it's very broad. It seems to me the same language that would be used if we were applying for monies to restore a historic trucks, structure, that they would want to ensure that we would have a maintenance budget to preserve that structure going forward if we were, say, doing something like that. So again, it's, it's very generic and very broad in the, in the letter. So we'll delve into it a little bit more and also, of course, ask Jay to, to weigh in. But I don't, I don't have anything more specific tonight.
Oh, that's all right, Jim. You, you gave me as much information as I was looking for. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I guess my other question is, do we, is this something we have to vote on, or we just generally consent to, to do it?
Well, I think what I would like to request, as we've done on things with a short timeline like this, is that the council would authorize myself to approve or disapprove based on what the city attorney and city manager kind of discuss. And so I think in keeping with that tradition, I'll ask council for their consensus to authorize me to do so when the time comes. Is everyone in agreement with that? All right, then that's what we will do. We'll maintain in touch and let you know how that happens. Keep in mind, if there, we do have the budget workshop that we need to do later this month. So if something groundbreaking happens with this, by the time that meeting comes up, it could come up again for discussion. So we, we won't, we won't avoid that if necessary. Anything else, Mr. Weaver?
No, sir, that's all from me.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager on his or the departmental reports as they're presented to you? Okay, everyone is happy. We have nothing additional for the legal report. Mr. Gullah was not able to join us this evening, so we'll move right into some new business. Up for approval this evening, we have the monthly financial report, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Haines, second from Councilman Hale. Are there any questions or concerns with the monthly financial report as presented to you this evening? All right, if we are satisfied, all in favor signify with your thumbs up. Anyone opposed? No, we are good. We'll move into our accounts payables. I will entertain a similar motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, we have motion from Councilman Fuller, second from Councilman Vigliotti. Is there any discussion on the accounts payables as presented to you? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the accounts payables, signify with your thumbs up. All right, anyone opposed? No, we are unanimous. Up next, we have an application for the Susan G. Komen Promise Ride for a special event taking place Memorial Park on June 13th, 2021. I will entertain a motion. Please specify the terms of your motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Very good. We have the motion from Councilman Vigliotti, the second from Councilman Hale. Are there any questions or concerns with this special event application? As previously mentioned, it was approved by Public Works and the Police Department already. Councilman Hale, did you have something to add, sir?
Yes, sir, I did. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that as the groups come in for, to the park, the groups will be smaller than 10. So if they come in at a larger pace, they will just allow 10 only at a time.
Very good. I assume that is with keeping with protocols we have in place now. Who knows what they're going to be come June 13th, but it's great that they're planning ahead for that. All right, all in favor of approving special event permit, Susan G. Komen Promise Ride, Memorial Park, June 13th, 2021, signify with your thumbs up. All right, and any opposition? None. That is approved. Finally, under new business, we have, not finally, we're going to have one more item that I failed to put on the agenda this evening. What's due with boards and commissions nominations for the board of elections? I do have four names I wish to present, to nominate, and I ask for the council's approval if they see fit. Those names are reappointing Judy Ferbay, reappointing Bill Kennedy, new appointment Sue Billings, and new appointment Christopher Miller. Those will be the four members of the board of elections if the council approves. Do you have any questions? Or are you prepared to vote?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all four nominations.
Very good. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Very good. We have motion from Councilman Vigliotti, second from Councilman Hale, approving the four previously mentioned names for the board of elections. Any discussion from council? All right, all in favor signify with your thumbs up. Anyone opposed? No. Very good. The clerk will reach out to them and get everything arranged for them. And the last item that failed to make it to the agenda, I apologize, is request for approval to hire the new economic development director. Jim, Claire, and myself did some interviews on Friday, and the gentleman that I would like to put forward for your approval is named Jay Nishi. I sent you his resume. He is working currently on a bachelor's degree through Salisbury University in urban and regional planning. His interview, I think, went very well. He spoke of a lot of great ideas as it revolves around economic development, and I think with his personality, demeanor, and wealth of knowledge, along with his desire to learn more, I think he would be a tremendous asset to the city and would do very well working with our business owners and bringing in more. With that, I would like to ask the council if I can have a motion to approve the hiring of Jay Nishi as economic development director.
Or I'll second.
All right, very good. We do have a motion from Councilman Hale and a second from Councilman Fuller. I'll entertain any questions or comments from the council. Yes, Councilman Vigliotti?
Could you spell the gentleman's last name for me, please?
I can. First name is Jay, J A Y. Last name is Mashi, M E A S H E Y.
All right, thank you very much. I couldn't, I know you had seen the resume earlier, but I did not remember how to spell the gentleman's name, so thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. His intended start date, if approved, would be March 1st. That will give him a chance to move to the area. He is kind of just, just outside of here, I believe, and he would be moving closer. And again, he is working on that degree in a virtual setting, so it would have minimal interruption to his duties here. Any additional questions that I can entertain? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the hiring? Wait before we do so. Keep in mind, the background check has not been completed, so this is also dependent on a successful background check. If something comes back outrageous, we may choose to go otherwise. But with that said, contingent approval from the council to hire Jay Nishi for economic development, I ask for your approval with your thumbs up. All right, and any opposition? There is none. We are unanimous. Thank you, council. I appreciate that. That's one position taken care of. Still working on planning and zoning. I think we have a little more talking to do. Based on the resumes that we received, there was, I think, one potential for interview. Unfortunately, he may be requesting more money than we're willing to put into that position at this time. But again, we're going to keep working on it, and we'll let you know. With that, we'll move into our council member reports. Let's start with Councilman Fuller. What do you have for us this evening?
Actually, we didn't have a meeting in January, so I don't have anything.
All right, very good. Councilman Vigliotti, I know you're going to have something for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. At first, I have the police departmental report for the month of January 2021. It's a little on the short side this month, but that's okay, because our guys are working hard. The total number of dispatched or generated calls for service numbered 292. The total number of citations issued were 29. The total number of warnings issued were 18. The total number of adult arrests were eight, and the total number of juvenile arrests, zero. Of special note, during the month of January, Major Robert Mitchell completed a week-long first-line administrator training hosted by the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission. And Dakota Myers also completed training in January and is a LiDAR certification. And the second thing I have this month, I've, and maybe this ties in also, good timing with the, the hiring of a new economic development director, you know, pending the background check. And one of the things I've been thinking about over the last couple of years, and Mayor, I know you and I, when you were on council in the past, we worked on trying to come up with a new way of, of, I don't like to use the word marketing, but talking about the city. And so I've been thinking about that a lot lately, and over the years, we've had, you know, through various incarnations, different ways of trying to, to describe our city, you know, whether it was like focusing on our Victorian architecture or focusing on our Civil War heritage. And, and none of those ever quite seemed to, to work out, you know, in, in the long run. And so what I was thinking, and of course, you know, I'll be sending this out to, to various people with, you know, as a suggestion, is that I think, you know, what I came to the realization is maybe we're trying too hard to be something that we really aren't. And, and what I mean by that is, you know, we, rather than trying to embrace any specific part of our history or, or specific aspect of the city, you know, what if we simply take stock in the fact that we really are just a simple, straightforward, American hometown? And so what I'm going to walk you through here, and it's only going to take a couple of seconds, right? You have to imagine that this is a, I guess you could call it like an infomercial of, of sorts, right? With beautiful, dramatic music playing, you have to imagine that I also have a pleasant voice, and you have to also imagine that the sights that you're seeing, the, the film that you're seeing are different, different reenactments of different things that I'm going to, to be reading here. And, and again, you have to consider that this might potentially be a narration for describing who we are. There is a place, a town older than America, who saw her first president, who stood with her in her darkest hour, who helped power economic booms, who sent her sons and daughters to defend, who helped build this country, who helped to build it still. A place to chase your dreams, a place to feel welcome, a place to come home, a place to know it is still the morning. We are an American town, but we're not just any town. We're tawny town. It's simple, it's straightforward, it doesn't rely on any specific thing, but it reflects on our entire heritage. And rather than trying to break our backs being unique, we embrace everything and who we are. But that's just a, just a couple of thoughts that I had there.
I think it's a, a great idea, and I appreciate what you've put forward to us. I, I'd love to see something pulled from that to become more or less a new slogan. And the reason I say that is I, I love a small town with a big heart, but as we realize at the, one of the summer conferences, there's four other municipalities in Maryland that use that exact same slogan, which is hardly unique. And while I understand, you know, we do want something that does set us apart, and I think if we were to pull something out of what you just spoke, maybe we could come up with, with a slogan that makes us a little more identifiable. So if, if you don't mind, maybe pulling something together for a, a short slogan, we can work on that.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can email you this, and, and if you're not doing anything exciting, I'd be happy to have you work on that with me. And if anybody else has any suggestions, I'd love to, to hear them.
Sounds great. I rarely do anything exciting, so that works out perfectly.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, councilman. With that, Mayor Portem Foster, do you have anything for us this evening? Up, you're muted, ma'am.
I have a few things. First of all, I attended a town hall presented by Life Bridge Health Corporation. I was invited, I don't know what the invite, who the invite list consisted of, but it was presented by Leslie Simmons, the CEO of Life Bridge, along with a doctor to answer some questions on the COVID vaccine issue. I don't know about everybody else, but I've been getting a few questions from a few people about what's going on with the vaccine, and there's just a lot of confusion out there. But the town hall lasted an hour, they answered some specific questions. Bottom line is, like we all know, not enough vaccine. And, but it was very informative. She gave some resources, some extra resources that people may not know about, but that was held on February 1. Additionally, as I have mentioned to council, I will be participating in a panel discussion for Black History Month presented by Carroll Community College on the 25th of February. And I don't know when, but I'm sure that will eventually make its way to the Carroll County Cable Network channel for everybody's viewing. And last, the MML, I don't know if, well, I'm sure the mayor knows about this, but they are planning a sort of hybrid summer conference, and it's going to be part in-person and part virtual. They are in the planning stages. I understand that the in-person part of the conference is contingent on 800 attendees, and it will be cut off at the point, and if they reach 800. And then I think a few days later, they will have the other part that's virtual, but that is still in the planning stages. And that's it.
Very good. Now, I had heard Mayor Portem, at one point, they talked about limiting attendance to two people per municipality. Is that still?
Yes, two people per municipality. And I don't know, Mayor, I guess that's your choice, who the two people are.
Right. I was thinking a gladiator-style fight to the death would be the best option.
I don't know. You might not have to fight.
We'll see. Hopefully, hopefully vaccine rollout happens the way that they want it to, not that it is, but the way they want it to, and we can see some improvement in attendance and things like that. But, but we shall see. I think Mayor Portem hit it on concern with the vaccine regarding its rollout. I think in addition, not enough vaccines, there's also, I, I don't think there's a lot of clarity to who and when it's available to. I think that's causing a lot of confusion as well.
That is causing an awful lot of confusion. What they did recommend, though, Leslie Simmons recommended, and everybody recommended, is to just get on everybody's site and register. Whoever will let you register, just register.
Yep. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I, I wish you the best with the event at Carroll Community College.
Thank you.
Something, if they do put up a link that it's streaming or anything, if you could send that around, that would be great. I, I would like to watch it myself. All right, thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, sir, just one small item. The memorial donations for Boffler here, for trees and events, so on and so forth, have reached, have increased to over $2,400 as of last Tuesday. So very nice that we can buy some mature trees. And that's just a great feel-good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Haines, do you have anything for us this evening?
In terms of public works tonight, no, but I just want to mention that I spent most of January down in Washington DC. Was fortunately very uneventful and very happy to be back home, but other than that, no.
We appreciate your service down there during the difficult time in our nation's capital, and thank you for, for being willing to do so. I know from what I saw on the television, it was not the easiest of things for the National Guard while they were down there, but just know that you were in our thoughts here and glad you came back okay, and that nothing outrageous happened while you were there.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. What I have for you, I do want to let the council know, March 11th will be the MML chapter meeting for Carroll County. That is also the meeting, this, of course, will be virtual, keep in mind, that is also the meeting where they will elect the new chapter board. So if you're able to attend, once we get more information, I'll send it out to you. We'll get some RSVPs. It is virtual, you don't even have to leave the city to go there. I'd love for everyone to attend and kind of get the updates on that. That will be, I believe, our last chapter meeting before summer conference. So if we're able to attend, that would be great. I have, let's see, what else? Still trying to keep up with all the bills coming through the state legislature. There's, it seems like just more and more keep getting added. Wednesday morning is the next legislative committee meeting. We'll see what comes out of that. But as of right now, small cell is not a hot topic, which is great. We don't expect a whole lot to happen with that. The biggest items for this year have been, police reform has been a major topic. There are also several bills that will affect municipalities tremendously if they get passed, things regarding requiring amendments to charters for special elections, things like that. Items that MML, as municipalities, we tend to fight, because we prefer to be more of a home rule, as opposed to a lot of preemption coming from the state. But of course, there are situations, and something we're probably going to look into in the next couple of months, of certain of certain situations that may come up that we need to address that the charter does not. Primarily, if a majority of the council leaves or vacates their seats, how do you fill those seats? Situation arose in the municipality, they have a three-person council. One passed away, another one moved and left one person who then had to fill the other two seats. So the idea is at what point do you have a special election to fill council seats? So something to keep in mind, if the state does not pass a bill, which I hope they don't, it's something we should definitely have addressed in our charter as well. Let's see, we already spoke about vaccinations. I do urge everybody, please consider being vaccinated. Seek out, contact the county health department if you have questions. I know they're starting to roll out two pharmacies, the giant in Westminster. Do whatever you can. If you're interested in getting that done, I do encourage you. Please do what you can to do so. With that, I believe that's the end of my report, but I do want to discuss with council the budget workshop. We do need to set that date. The city manager did send out an email after he and I spoke proposing February 25th. Mayor Portem Foster mentioned she does have her, her event at the community college. And if you could remind me, when do you expect that to be over, Mayor Portem Foster?
They did not specify an end time, but they're starting at five, so I want to say that I should be done by seven.
Okay. Um, do we want to look at 7:30 on the 25th or do we want to look at another day? Does anyone have suggestions? Keeping in mind, we have to advertise it two weeks in advance. So your options would be 23rd, 24th, or 25th? Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
I'm available. Any of those nights, I like to do it as early as possible. Just not because I'm the old guy on the council, but my bedtime's 8:30. So we can do good business for the city and early, that'd be awesome.
Okay. I think Councilman Vigliotti's bedtime is about the same.
I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, any, any night that week would work. However, I'm 8:45, not 8:30.
Oh, very good.
But no, in, in all, in all seriousness, and any one of those evenings would work, but for Mayor Portem Foster, because I know that panel discussions can sometimes be elongated. Yeah, I could certainly recommend maybe doing any of the days before that, just in case Mayor Portem Foster ends up, you know, with two hours worth of questions to answer or something.
All right.
Thank you. I was gonna suggest either of the other two days.
Very good. How's the 24th feel for everybody? Okay. Would we like to start earlier? Maybe is 6 o'clock too early for anybody? I, I definitely like to do it early. That way we can get into a healthy discussion and not feel rushed through it. And also keep in mind those who have early bedtimes. Okay, with that, let's go for Wednesday, February 24th at 6:00 PM. And that gives the city clerk enough time to get that advertised. And that will be so. At that meeting, I assume, Mr. Weeper, that we'll have Barry with us as well? Yes, perfect. 6:00 PM. Great. Thank you, everybody, for your assistance in getting that figured out. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? All right, everyone is good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second?
Was itching to get out. Okay. Motion from Mayor Portem Foster, second from Councilman Vigliotti to adjourn. All in favor signify with your thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Didn't think so. Have a great February. I'll see everyone on the 24th for the budget workshop. Good night.